Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, May 29th. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Githens.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
All right. Thank you so much. Next up on our agenda is the department updates, and we will begin with the Health Department. I don't know if Ms. Kelly is on.
Yes, I'm online. Can you see me and hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Perfect. So just a few updates for you this morning. COVID wastewater detections have continued to increase, so this likely means that we are still seeing the virus levels circulate in the community. However, hospital visits remain low. The Futures Family Planning Clinic is now offering virtual telehealth appointments. You can call 812-349-7343 for more information. And as always, we have vaccines available through our Public Health Clinic at 333 Miller Drive here in Bloomington.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I wanted to let people know that another thing that is being done at the Health Clinic on South Miller Drive is that they're coordinating distribution of gun locks that we were able to purchase with some of the American Rescue Plan Act. And this came about because we had meetings around with various community members and want to give kudos to the Moms Demand Action Group locally, but also to the local pediatricians who are helping with the distribution of these gun locks. And the type that are being distributed can be used for both long guns and handguns. And so we encourage anyone who wants these to reach out. We will make them available, and we're very pleased that this is another way to improve public health in our community. And I will point out, too, that for teens, suicide is a very, very big issue, and having your guns safely stored using gun locks is one way to help at least deter some of that.
That's great. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions or comments either. Thank you very much. All right. I see that the Director of Planning, Ms. Jackie Nestor-Jellen, has raised her hand for a department update. Good morning.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for a quick update regarding the county development ordinance. So thanks for having me this morning. I just want to give a brief update on where we are at with the county development ordinance. The county development ordinance, for those of you that may not know, is an update to the zoning and subdivision control text as well as the county development ordinance map. So this morning, I want to give an update on the county development ordinance zoning map, which if you go to our website, monroe cdo.com, we do have the latest links on our website up at the top, including what we're calling a conversion chart of zoning districts. So if you were to click on the conversion chart of zoning districts, I just want to give a little bit of explanation on this chart because I think it's very helpful. It does include a two-page summary following this chart, but the way that you would use this zoning chart conversion map is that the left-hand column consists of the zoning districts that we have currently, and the middle column is the new zoning districts that we will be creating under the CDO. There's a lot of similarities between some of the current zoning districts and the new zoning districts. So what we've done is for similar zoning districts such as this category of estate residential 2.5 and conservation residential, which has a 2.5 acre minimum lot size, we are going to be converting that into a conservation residential 2.5 district, which will also have a 2.5 acre minimum lot size. What we did under the analysis is show what's going to be changing under the draft zoning map. So right now, we have 10,598 acres in those two districts, and we're proposing to have 18,661 acres in that new district. So that's a net gain of 8,064 acres. So what we've done in the right-hand column is categorize this further into groups. So we have a rural residential group, a residential group, institutional, business, industrial, airport, and then as well as outside of the jurisdiction and water bodies. So I wanted to give this update because it's something that we've provided to the Plan Commission that's fairly new. The zoning map is still a draft, so it's been changing. We have different iterations, different requests coming through by the public, and the Plan Commission is working very hard to review those on an individual basis and make recommendations based on the comprehensive plan and the best available data we have. So this is an update. What you've probably seen previously is what I have here on my screen. This is based on an older version of the draft zoning map. So now we're pointing people to this newer version of the draft zoning map with the latest data showing those numbers on the right-hand side. And again, all of this is still in draft mode. We hope to keep on schedule for the CDO to have adoption later this year. So if anyone has questions or wants to make comments, they're welcome to reach out to our office at planningoffice@co.monroe.in.us or come into our office Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00. We're here at the showers building, Suite 224. We're happy to walk through anyone's individual property, tell them what's changing, and give them all the information they need. So with that, I can take any questions that you might have or speak to anything further that you might need.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
I just want to compliment Jackie Nestor-Jellen and her entire staff for their professionalism and their attention to detail on this because it is very important.
Yes, they've done an amazing job, and a big thank you to the Plan Commission as well and all the committees. It's been good to see residents engaged and sending their information in, and I know we're addressing them as the requests as quickly as we can. So I appreciate all your hard work, and thanks to everyone. Okay. Are there any other?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department updates? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
There's somebody that has their hand raised.
That's a general public question.
Okay. Okay.
So I wanted to add to the department updates, and I believe you have something to add as well, but we are hosting a couple of listening sessions regarding the potential sighting of the justice complex at North Park. And the listening sessions will be held at the Eltsville Fire Station, thanks to the Fire Department there for helping, at 5080 West State Road 46. The first listening session is June 2nd at 3:00 p.m. The second one is June 5th, so June 2nd is Sunday, June 5th, which is Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m. So we look forward to hearing from community members, especially those who live in the area. And as we continue to look at and look for returned information on the geotechnical and environmental information on that property that we are still investigating, DLZ has been actively interviewing and engaging with all of our justice-related departments, and they are making a comprehensive listing of the space needs for each department. So we're not just sitting back and waiting for geotechnical and environmental information. DLZ is continuing to get work done that once we do have a site that we have selected, that this will then, they can then move forward quickly with the design, the first design phase. And it's really going to be up to the County Council and the Sheriff's Department to meet and to figure out and determine the size of the jail facility that they plan to, they want to build. So hopefully, that meeting will take place very soon. And we also, on a very different note, want to thank Jerry Appleberry, who's been a Monroe County employee for 32 years. He is retiring on Friday, and we want to thank him for his service, and I will always think of him when I see a Christmas tree. Yes. Thank you, Jerry. Yeah, he's just been an amazing, consistent employee in the maintenance area for Monroe County Government, and we can't thank him enough for everything he's done and all the mentoring he's done, especially as we've brought on new employees. So we will miss him. And then Commissioner Githens?
Sure. Each year, the Association of Indiana County Highway Engineers and Supervisors recognizes outstanding administrative and maintenance employees at their annual conference, and each of the 92 counties can nominate both those that do administrative functions and those that are involved in maintenance functions. And I wanted to let folks know that this year, the IHACHES Outstanding Employee in the Maintenance Function has been awarded to our own Wallace Bohal. He has been with the department for 34 years, and it's just incredible when I read what was written about him, but he just seems like such a dedicated professional and the many tasks that he's willing to take on. And I think that the last couple sentences that were in that application that say, "Every task is completed to the best of his ability, and everyone around him is better for him being there. He consistently finds ways to lead and is a huge asset to this department. Wallace makes the Monroe County Highway Department a better place by being a good example each and every day." That's quite a compliment to anyone. But I also want to commend both Toby Turner, our Superintendent of Highways, and Lisa Ridge, our Highway Executive, for their leadership because I think that that's part of what keeps people in their jobs. And one of the things I learned last week is that we have four father-son teams working at the Highway Department. Fathers don't normally encourage their children to come work at a place that they really dislike, and so I want to also compliment Lisa Ridge and Toby for their hard work and their leadership.
Yeah. It was a great celebration, and we'll be getting a plaque, I guess, this week. Yeah, so that's really awesome, and they even found little excavating equipment trucks to put on the cake. There's a front loader full of frosting.
What about the belt?
The belts, yeah, the belt, the wrestling belt. Yes, that was really good. So, yeah, it was awesome. Thank you for inviting us. It was fun. It was a good way to spend the day, part of the day. All right. Okay, so with that, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda, limited to three minutes per person. We ask that respondents provide their name and their county of residence, and you can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. TSD, we still have a blank screen in front of us, so we have the landing page for signing in to the county. So if you could address us, that would be great. We do have one person who is online on Teams, and it's Lee. If you would, TSD, if you would bring her forward. Seeing no other public comments, we will move on with our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from May 22nd, 2024.
Second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? I have to go ahead. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes for May 22nd, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, May 29th, 2024, and Payroll, May 31st, 2024.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, tell us all about it.
Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for May 29th, 2024 totals $1,077,347.86. That includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The Payroll Docket for May 31st, 2024 totals $2,172,751.92, and that includes direct and indirect costs.
All right. Thank you so much, Auditor Gregory. Appreciate you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
I just wanted to point out that a few of the, or some of the claims were for new sirens for Emergency Management Department, and it was nice to see those. I know that Jamie and Justin are working on a program to replace things on a regular basis, and I think that's one of the ways we keep county residents safe. So I thank them for that.
There were a lot of them.
Yeah.
All right. Anything, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? You may come to the podium or raise your hand in Teams. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, May 29th, 2024, and Payroll, May 31st, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. I will note for the record that we have received two reports. The first is from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for April 2024, and the second report is from the Treasurer, and it is dated April 2024. And we will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of the Indiana Department of Health for Immunizations. Fund name, Immunization Fund Number 8183, in an amount of $187,303.80.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Kelly, tell us all about it.
So this is just a standard immunization grant award from the Indiana Department of Health. This helps to support our public health nursing that we contract with IU Health. This helps to cover some salary expenses, supplies, and services. One of the large costs that this will help cover this year are new vaccine refrigerators, so we are pretty excited about that. And we did lose COVID supplemental grant funding, so this is the only award that we will receive this year for vaccines.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I read recently that federal government may be ending payment for COVID vaccines, and so I hope that does not happen because we want to encourage as many people as possible who are willing to get the vaccine.
All right. I don't have any questions. Let's see if there's any comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, and thank you, TSD, for getting our monitor going. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Agreement for Immunization signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Amendment to the Health Officer Contract. Fund name, Health. Fund Number 1157, in an amount of $3,800. And this specifically is to cover the cost of the health officer's medical malpractice insurance, and I'd like those two words inserted in there, "medical malpractice," to ensure that the public understands what we're doing.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second, Ms. Jarkie.
Good morning. Good morning. So this, the proposed amendment for you was voted on by the Health Board on May 16th, and they approved it. It increases Dr. Britton's compensation for being the health officer by $3,800, and the increase is to cover his medical malpractice insurance. So for this year, he would get a lump sum of $3,800, and then for every year after, for the duration of the contract, the contract cost would go up to $43,800 and then divided into 12 monthly stalments. And I can make those changes. Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, great. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
If the cost of his medical malpractice insurance goes up, will his compensation then go up also?
He would have to renegotiate it with the Health Board. There was a change in his policy this year, which is what led to the increased cost, and because he did not anticipate it, they were comfortable increasing it for this year, but they would consider it if the cost went up again.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I wondered about the same issue. So the Health Board didn't think it was necessary to allow for yearly increases if the, no.
They did not.
I don't have any questions. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, and as we're waiting to see if someone raises their hand on Teams or comes to the podium in Nat U Hill, I will thank the residents of our community who serve on the Health Board. It's an important, important task. Seeing no comment, all those in favor of approving the amended amendment to the Health Officer Contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Business Associates Agreement and Project Implementation Commitment with Proactive MD. Fund name, Self-Insurance. Fund Number 4,700, in an amount of $59,750.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second e. Thank you for joining us today.
Oh, no problem. So give me a second here to get situated.
Yes. You have a PowerPoint, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm going to share my screen.
I'm sure TSD is aware. Thank you.
I think we're good. So the last time I was here to talk about this, it was a very abbreviated conversation because we were a little short on time. So I wanted to go through the process a little bit more in-depth before we talked about the agreements that are on the agenda. Does that sound good?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is the timeline of the RFP process. So I also want to say I was part of this process. Seth Elgar is from our office, and Sarah Michaels from Apex Benefits was also part of the process. She is on the Teams meeting and available to answer any questions. And the process, Apex Benefits is our broker for our benefits that we offer to employees. They help sort of, they're the liaison between us and those insurance companies. And so Apex has a portion of their organization that deals specifically with employer clinics, and Sarah specializes in that. She facilitated the entire RFP process, communicated with all of the vendors, put all the information together. So this process was initiated by her on February 2nd, and then February 3rd, I'm just going to go through things. February 13th, the vendors submitted their intent to participate. Then on February 20th, I met with them at the clinic, and everybody toured the clinic, asked questions. Then they, oh, and then on February 22nd, I sent out an email to all employees notifying them that we were evaluating our clinic provider, and we asked them to participate in a survey to give their feedback on the clinic. On the 23rd was the deadline for RFP questions from vendors. On March 13th, in this room, at the Commissioners' Meeting, we opened all of the submissions for the bids to participate in the RFP process. On the 14th, we publicly noticed the meetings that we were going to have with vendors, which then took place on March 25th. In this room, we had five meetings of about 45 minutes each with each vendor. Those were also on Teams, and the vendors presented everything that they submitted in the RFP. On April 15th, we did finalist interviews, and then on May 15th, we presented our recommendation to you for consideration. The participating vendors in the process were Franciscan Health, Ascension Health, Marathon Health, which is taking over for our current provider, as well as Proactive MD and QuadMed. The scoring and the considerations that we went over throughout the process are up here. So first was, one of those options was cost and billing, and then you can see that all of the other things we took into consideration were not financial in nature. Account management and reporting, the patient experience, communication with employees and the engagement with employees, referrals and chronic condition management and scheduling, and the patient portal. So the goal of the employee clinic is convenience. We want employees to be able to get care as soon as possible, so that same day, next day, or shortened wait times for their appointments. It's a low for us in almost every circumstance, it's a no-cost option for employees. It does provide preventative care and chronic condition management, and that's the, I would say, probably the main goal for us as it relates to our health care costs. So we're, that's the goal, is to try and provide preventative care so we can get ahead of the things that may be an issue down the road that would then be part of the claims on our health plan. And so then that does in turn offer reduced cost on our health plan and reduce lab and pharmaceutical costs because a lot of that can be done through the clinic rather than going to an external provider. The current provider model, right now, in our clinic, we have a doctor, a physician's assistant, and a nurse practitioner, and that totals, they do not work every day. They are working a combined total of 40 hours to cover the clinic schedule. Some of them are working three days, some one day or two days, however it's outlined based on, sometimes it varies, but none of them are working five days a week. So the three of them make up the time period that we are open to employees, plus the two medical assistants. And they're doing, sometimes they're operating additional hours to do blood work and things like that. The proposed schedule with the, if we transition to the new provider, would be having one staff member covering the 40 hours a week. I will say that we are open to retaining staff if that is possible, but we do not know because we are not at a point where we can have that conversation with them. And then also the two medical assistants, plus the enhanced option for the, the change in providers is that virtual care will be an increased, there will be increased availability for virtual care. If, if the clinic is, is busy with physical appointments all week, and somebody needs to get in immediately to be able to address something that's a, you know, and not an emergency, but something that they would like to have taken care of that day, the virtual care is an option. And that's not been an option with our, our current provider. So that was something we were looking at to, to be able to provide. I mentioned we did an employee survey, and access to same-day or next-day care was very, very high on the priority list for employees. And so that's why we really wanted to make sure we had the option available for employees to get care as soon as possible. Okay, sorry, it's not working there for a second. So we are proposing to change the model that we've, we've been used to. So the clinic, when we started offering this as a benefit to employees 12, 13 years ago, there was a different, healthcare was different at the time. And we have, throughout the 12, 13 years that we've been doing this, we haven't evaluated the, the offerings from the clinic by going through this sort of RFP process. And so we don't, at the time, we didn't know what we didn't know. And our eyes were open to different options in having these conversations with five different vendors in the employer clinic space. And their recommendations were all a nurse practitioner model. And so I just have for everyone's education what a nurse practitioner can do for us in, in the clinic. We, in, in the employee survey, we also, the majority of employees are using the, the clinic as their primary care provider. And I say provider because it does not necessarily mean physician. It doesn't mean a doctor. We are, throughout this whole process, we recognize that the staff that are currently at the clinic have been wonderful for the entire time that they've been here. They've taken great care of our employees. But we were educated throughout this RFP process that there are, are different options. And we, we learned a lot through that. And so the nurse practitioner can be your primary care provider. They can do everything that the, the doctor can do in the primary care space. There's some information here that more than 70% of licensed nurse practitioners operate in the primary care space. If they're not, then it's in some sort of specialty care facility where they have additional experience and education for that special stuff that they're providing. And, and I did check with, with Apex with Sarah to just make sure my understanding was correct. And she did also confirm that in primary care, nurse practitioners are the new standard of care. And that is, they, there isn't anything that they can't do. They are not able to prescribe some scheduled-to medications because they are just, they are medications we would not be prescribing in the clinic anyway, due to the nature of those types of medications, because they are addictive. So that's just not something that we would even be considering as part of our, our practice.
Have you ever been a part of the formulary either?
Yes, and those prescriptions have never been part of our formulary either. So they would have the, the prescribing authority to prescribe all the medications that we are currently prescribing. And they would also be able to order the, all the blood, lab work and blood work and things like that that we are currently doing in, in the clinic space. And the only other thing I wanted to, to mention was that in Indiana, we are a, there are like sort of three different tiers of nurse practitioners across the country. Indiana is a reduced practice state, which means that they can operate under the, they can't have their own independent practice. They need to operate under a collaborating physician. But with the nature of these employer clinics and operating with a company that manages those clinics, they still would be, they would operate under the, the oversight of the collaborating physician and be able to do everything that they, that, that the doctor can do. So that being said, I'm waiting for this to catch up here. The current clinic utilization in 2023, 37% of visits were with a doctor. And 63% of the visits were with a physician's assistant or nurse practitioner. And so that does drive this decision-making, because the majority of employee visits are already with the nurse practitioner. So that's something that we took into, into consideration. Cost definitely is part of the consideration as well. And so I've broken that down for you. The first line that you'll see there is, we are currently with Everside Health. And what I did there is I took our costs in 2023. And I, so everything we were looking at was over a five-year period. And I, I projected with a 5% increase, which is what we had been seeing from Everside over the past few years. I projected that out for five years to be able to compare it to the other vendors. So currently, we are switching or merging with Marathon Health. So you can see the difference there in our current model with the three providers I listed before. What we are currently paying or would be projected to pay over a five-year period would be that first number, a little over $3 million. Moving, merging to the new provider with that same model, the same providers, we would be looking at a $1.5 million increase over the five-year period. So then we wanted to evaluate that nurse practitioner model to see what that would look like. That was the recommendation from all of the vendors. And so that's what we, we tried to compare apples to apples to, to understand what that would, what, what it would entail financially. So you can see that Quad Med was one of the providers, and that those are the numbers that they came in at. Proactive, slightly less than that. And then the Marathon Health, if we switched, we, if we stayed with what would be the current vendor, moving to the nurse practitioner model would come in at a little over $3 million. Other things that we had to take into consideration are what we refer to as, sorry, it's a little slow, pass-through expenses. So this is what we are paying for our labs and our medications, the formulary, the, the prescriptions that go through the clinic. Currently, in, in 2023, we paid about $54,000. Marathon proposing that that amount would be $72,000. And then Quad Med and Proactive proposing that their costs would be somewhere around $36,000 and $30,000. And that's because we are, our recommendation is Proactive. And with their model, the, the lab fees that are less than $15 are fixed into our administrative costs, and so we're not paying for those. So we would only be paying for the, some of the other pass-through expenses, the medications and things, which was not something that was being considered by our current vendor or the vendor that we would be merging with.
That $15 mark also applies to the, to why you're seeing that?
Seth is saying that the $15 would apply to medications as well. So if it's a, it's a lab or a medication under $15, that we would not be seeing those pass-through expenses. It's in our fixed costs for, for the year.
And Proactive were 95% fixed costs.
And with Proactive, it was 95% fixed costs. And then the other thing that we took into consideration is we share the clinic with some community partners. And we get what are called access fees from the clinic vendor for those people using our clinic. And with Everside, it's currently about $3 per visit. With Marathon, it would not change. It would stay at the $3 mark. And we discussed this with Proactive to see what that would look like for them if we were to continue, if that's still an option, to continue having those community partners utilize the clinic. And their access fee would be at $7.50 per person per month, regardless of the visits in that month. So we would be getting more of a benefit with Proactive by having those, those members using our clinic.
You can, you can say, yeah. Part of the, the concern as well with access fee reimbursement is maintenance and repair on the building. It's wear and tear on HVAC, it's door handles and door hinges that wear out, it's painting the walls, it's replacing floors. At $3 per person per visit, and we were getting reimbursed four and six months prior, not even in real time, it doesn't add up to very much. And if we are engaging with people per month, per person, that's gonna be more beneficial for the county and for our resource usage, and for the fact that we're sharing that resource with our community.
Some other things that I just wanted to point out is that this has been, I've, I've been in my role for about five years, and I've been managing the clinic for that entire time. And in those five years, this will be the third change that I've seen in administration. And that's, that's a lot in, in a short period of time. And throughout that time period, and Angie does, we, we do this together. Angie and I have seen a lot of, a lot of things that have not changed in five years, things that we've asked for repeatedly, that we are continuing to see are concerns. And so some of those things, for me, that I can speak of, that things that I see on my side of things, so like I said, the, the staff and the care that employees have received has been excellent. But there are things that we see on our side that we're not necessarily always communicating because we want employees to have this idea that the clinic is solely focused on them and, and their, their health. But from our side, there are some things, over five years, what we have is every, when, when a new employee joins Monroe County Government, they enroll in their benefits. And they do that through a website, and that website manages all their information, and it sends a file to every single insurance carrier. So Anthem's getting a file saying this person is enrolled, and our dental plan, and all those people. And we do the same thing for the clinic. We have a file that goes to them every week, telling them who the new employees are. That file has not worked in the five years that I've been doing this because of the technology that Everside previously, Activate, was using. It would not import into their software. The staff at the clinic would not be able to find the information. And so that may seem like a small thing, technology-wise, but for new employees, it's a big deal. Because they think, I'm enrolled in insurance, everything's good, I'm gonna go over to the clinic because that's what people told me I should do, and I'm gonna have this great benefit. But when they call, they're told they cannot be seen because their information isn't in the system. And so then that employee either doesn't go because they're frustrated, or they call me, and I have to call over there and tell them, or look it up, and then tell them that that employee is eligible, or go through some series of events like that to try and get that employee to be able to go to the clinic. And that is the employee's first experience with the clinic. And that's a concern. And that's been a concern for us for a while, and it hasn't been, been remedied throughout the time period that I've been working on it, even though we talk about it a lot. Appointments have been an issue. I've heard over the course of time from employees that they call and the, they, nobody answers the phone, that they don't have, they don't get a, a return phone call, even if they leave a message, if they leave multiple messages. They call to try and get their prescriptions refilled, and they're not notified when that's ready. And so they go sometimes without their medication because they're unsure of the, of the process and whether they are able to pick that medication up. The, the new provider, instead of having, because it is a small staff in the clinic, instead of having the medical assistants answer the phone and make those return phone calls, the new provider has a centralized system where somebody will always answer the phone, will always schedule an appointment, will make sure that they are not going without, without being heard, and, and make sure that they're scheduling those things. Technology is also a concern. The, the website and app have not been very helpful for trying to mitigate those phone issues, telling people to go through the app or go through the website. There have been some issues with that. And reporting has also been an issue, something that Angie and I have asked for. In order for us to make these educated decisions about what we need at the clinic, we rely on the data that's, that's coming in from the, from the clinic to, to support what we need to do. And Apex, we, we go through quarterly, monthly, annual reports with them, and we can see what are happening with all of our claims. And that same data should be, from the clinic, should be showing us what is happening with our, our, our population. And that information should also be shared with Apex, so that that can be, we can have this holistic view of everything that's happening, so we know what we need to do. And that hasn't happened. And I will say the biggest concern that we had when we, we had to evaluate things, and there, we have this merging of two vendors, and I say merging because I think that's the appropriate thing. It's, sometimes in an acquisition, it's a little bit easier because you know what you're gonna get. And through our conversations in, in the RFP process, there were some, there were more questions than there were answers about the merger, because we were unsure whose technology was going to be doing what and what was going to be the outcome at the end. And we were told that that process may take quite some time in order for it to make its way to us, to where we are experiencing some issues, because they did have to schedule how they were going to merge all of their, their clinics, you know, in, in multiple states, and what that timeline would be. And so we were looking at not a lot of changes being made in, in technology for, for a long time period. And then the final thing that I will say is that the, the goal of the clinic is to really focus on the preventative care, wellness, and the, the chronic condition management. And we, in the past couple of years, have had to scale back on what we offer in terms of wellness incentives, because we were unable to get the correct data to support. We, we used to do goals, so employees would go over there, they would have a list of things that they were working on, we would get that information from the clinic. And that process was too cumbersome to continue on the staff and on us. And so we just stopped doing that because there were no other solutions that could be provided at the time for us to enhance our, our wellness program. And we are really confident that, that Proactive will help us to be able to provide more wellness initiatives for, for employees, so that we can focus on some of those, the preventative and the chronic conditions that we are seeing throughout the clinic. And just the reporting in general didn't really help us identify what some of those issues. issues were, so we didn't know what improvements we needed to make within the clinic in order to be able to offer more to employees. And so, I mean, those are some of the reasons why we decided to make the recommendation that we did to you a few weeks ago. And I'm more than happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. A lot of information, really good information. Appreciate it.
Can I just say one more thing?
Please.
We did not, we know this is a big decision, and the RFP process outlined this timeline of when things would happen, and we took longer than that, longer than what we had told all of the vendors because we had a lot of questions, and we knew this was a big decision, and we wanted to make sure we had all the information.
Okay. All right. So we'll take comments and questions from the board first before we open up for public comment. Commissioner Githens.
Well, I appreciate the thoroughness of this and the fact that you have made this as public as possible for people to be part of, and especially the survey that you sent out to employees. This shouldn't have come as a surprise to anyone, but I appreciate your professionalism in all this.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah. I also appreciate the process that you went through, which is really a process that's used for many of the county's decisions and is relatively ordinary. But it is a huge decision and does affect a lot of people. And of course, change is always somewhat threatening. And I did have one question.
Sure.
That I hope, I don't know if you'd have the answer or not, but what is the difference between a nurse practitioner and a physician's assistant?
They both are, they have masters, sorry, I was like, no, master. They're both masters-level certified, I don't know, care providers. And they, I think, from my understanding, is that sometimes nurse practitioners will actually have a broader scope of care than a physician's assistant because they do operate in conjunction with the doctor. And so I think that they are operating in the same way at our clinic, that they're both doing the same type of services.
Thank you. So I just, I just have some questions for some clarification. So you noted that Quad and Proactive in their RFPs had recommended going for a nurse practitioner model. Did Marathon also recommend that?
Sure. That wasn't their initial recommendation because they currently know how, you know, what our model is. And so they, they did include that, they gave us three options to choose from in their initial recommendation. And then through some additional conversations with them, we really asked them, "Hey, we are going through this process because we want you to come to us and tell us what the solution is. We've told you all of these things that we're dealing with and what direction we'd like to go, but we want you to come up with a solution. What's the answer to what we need to do?" And they recommended the nurse practitioner model.
Okay, okay. You mentioned issues, almost, I think it was the last slide, changes in administration. Can you explain what that, what you mean by that?
Yeah. So for me, and what I've experienced, when I came in, we were with Activate, and we had an account manager at that time. And shortly after that, I would say probably like, I don't know, 20, 20-ish, we switched to Everside. We got tossed around to a couple of account managers because that person, our old account manager, had been promoted in the new company. And so we had to sort of rehash all of the things that we were going through, we were dealing with. And then that person lasted maybe a year or so before we kind of went without one. And one of the, the medical assistants, like supervisor, she stepped in and was kind of taking care of some of our daily needs that we had. And then we were assigned a new account manager. And now we're going to Marathon, and that's to be determined about who will be taking over the account management there. So those are just kind of the struggles that I've had with not being able to, we've had to re-go over everything every time there was a change and try and figure that out.
So there's, in what we've talked to proactive about thus far, staffing would be nurse practitioner 40 hours a week.
Correct.
And what else? What are the other positions that will be filled?
Two medical assistants. And we also had conversation about there are some enhanced options that we can do with that. We really like the idea of a patient advocate, which is somebody that will be in the clinic, that they will help sort of bridge the gap between the clinic and the outside world. And so they're going to make sure that if there's a preventative thing that you need to do, that they're following up with you, and they're making sure that you get that, or we bring something in that you need. If you, if the nurse practitioner would refer you to some other specialist or something like that, the patient advocate is going to follow up with you and with them to make sure everything is happening the way that it should. It's going to be somebody that makes sure there are no gaps in care and make sure that, yeah, if you're struggling getting somebody to call you back from some other place, some other center, they're going to do that work for you. So trying to take that, I know that's been a frustration I've heard from employees, that, yeah, that dealing with some of those things can be pretty stressful. So that's a way for us to advocate for the employee in that way. But again, that's the, if I can sort of segue into what's in front of you today, that, what is it called, implementation agreement that will give proactive the ability, also the business services talks about protective health information and things like that. So these two combined will give proactive the ability to review our data so that they can tell us, yes, this patient advocate is a great idea because you have all of these things going on, and they will be able to tell us at what level. Is that 40 hours a week for that person, or part-time, or things like that? So those are things we would like to evaluate.
Okay. If they look at the data and it comes back that we should have a physician two days a week at the clinic, is that something they could do?
That, I mean, that's definitely something they could do, yes.
Okay. And there was something mentioned about preventative care in terms of flu shots and all of that. How would proactive manage that? Would it be the same? Would it be better? Would it be?
Yeah, there will be no difference in the preventative care that is given at the clinic. We'll still do flu shots on-site. And kind of what I alluded to in the wellness space, I think that we will be able to offer more through what proactive does. One of the, this is a thing that I like, that I thought was really cool when they mentioned it, but they have the ability to do mobile mammograms, and so they would have somebody come on-site. That's part of our agreement with them. It's, employees aren't having to go out to another facility, get that done. We can do that however often we need to do it based on, you know, feedback or data. But those are the enhancements that we're really looking forward to, being able to offer those additional things. And I felt like we were, it feels like we're a little stagnant where we're at now because we're not offering additional services for employees.
Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to add about this particular contract or our discussion?
I think it's really two different agreements. One is the Business Associates Agreement, which we see quite a bit whenever we're dealing with health information. It's just how the federal government wants us to make sure that if any of it does get leaked, they can let the people know who, whose information it is. So that's kind of a standard agreement. The other one is kind of a, an agreement to get the implementation going. It acknowledges in that, that, you know, the final contract's not here. And so if it doesn't happen, it says what happens to the expenses or the money we forward to them. Essentially, if they've used it, it's going to be theirs. So those are a couple of things. I think the one thing that I, that I really wanted to mention to you guys, because it wasn't on the timeline, is August 1st. Because we had to give notice to our current vendor at least six months in advance, and it had to, August 1st is the contract anniversary date, which is the day that cancellation has to occur. So this needs to be resolved in time for whoever uses it, whoever gets going, for them to be in place on August 1st. And so I think that is an important date that you guys, that everybody should know.
And there are plans to take folks from proactive around to each department?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, that is the plan. We would love to come to every single department and have these in-depth conversations so we can make sure that everybody, I think there's going to be some education that's going to need to be done. I understand, you know, we are accustomed to having a doctor over there to be able to do the things we're used to, and some education around what those, what a nurse practitioner does and how they're able to operate and what they can do at the clinic. I think we're, that's what we would like to do. And just education all around about the other options and enhancements that proactive will offer.
And we can't have those conversations until we complete the project implementation commitment agreement.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else for the public comment?
Yeah, I, we may want to reserve some time afterwards.
Absolutely, yeah. We'll come back for, we'll come back for more comments. I just want to see if you had anything. If you would be so kind, I think there are going to be some questions that come up.
Sure.
If you would be so kind as to kind of keep a list of answers and, you know, how to address concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
As people are coming up, because this is an important issue, obviously.
Absolutely.
Healthcare is everything to so many of us. And if you could kind of track some of that as folks are here offering comments, and we can either address them today, or if you would, you could send an email to all employees answering the questions. That actually might be better because then you will have the time to make sure that you're fully addressing each question. If you wouldn't mind making that commitment today, and again, thank you both for all the hard work you've done on this. It's a lot of work. I don't think people appreciate how much work you've done so far, and it's not over yet, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so let's go ahead, and we'll have you come back up too if there's something you really feel like you need to address. Let's go ahead and open the floor for public comment. And I know there's a lot of employees who wish to speak. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, we've received a few emails, we do have a letter and petition in front of us as well. But if you could do that, we would appreciate it just for the fact that we do have other items on the agenda. But obviously, for elected officials, if you feel like you need more time, we're certainly not going to cut you off. So, you know, just a request at this point, if you don't mind. All right, so Ms. Smith.
Thank you, and good morning, commissioners. I respectfully address you this morning as the department head of the treasurer's office and the supervisor of several longstanding county employees well above 20-some years. The major and primary concern of these employees is how they will obtain a primary care physician if the clinic changes hands and they are no longer patients of Dr. Mitchif. Now, I personally have been a patient of his since he came here 13 years ago. It is absolutely the best medical care I've ever had in my life and the most longevity of any physician I've had in my life. This doctor is well-liked, respected, intuitive, easy to talk to, and just a gem of a doctor. But most importantly, he knows us and has the longevity of caring for our collective well-being for 13 years. We are asking that you do not sign the agreement with another contractor or any provision with another contractor to provide any kind of medical services or prepare for that for the employees, and that you find a way to continue our clinic with the same provider the affected employees have come to love and to trust. Losing such an amazing doctor on the grounds of a lower contract bid when the bid winner will not directly provide a doctor's services means the cost reduction is only made by removing the primary physician that employees want and that they need. Please remember that each of the signatures on that petition represents not just a person, but a family. Neither Judy nor myself wrote that, nor did we carry that around for signatures. A family who values the doctors enough to speak openly, write that, write that whatever letter, whatever you want to call it, speak, openly speak of his great service. The city of Bloomington has just signed with this clinic because of those amazing things that our employees said of this doctor and the services provided here. The choice of a medical provider should be a choice taken seriously and with much thought. When the clinic was started, a committee across county government was created to listen to what employees wanted, and it was determined that what they really wanted was stable, primary care physician. And it was determined that through those conversations, our primary physician to build a relationship with was the most important need. This came to fruition, and many, many employees cherish this relationship now, after all these years, as demonstrated by those signatures. What is the price of our good health? Surely, it's worth $200,000 a year to provide a well-liked doctor and one we trust to us, the employees. The people this decision affects most are the employees and their families who regularly use the clinic and want to be treated by Dr. Mitchif and his staff. And I do want to point out that 37% that saw the doctor and not the nurse practitioner, Dr. Mitchif has never spent less than one hour with me, and I've never had a nurse practitioner spend more than 10 minutes or 15 minutes with me. So that percentage is based on the number of visits, not the length of visits. So these employees have clearly spoken. And those signatures, I'm understanding, were collected in less than six hours by just a few people yesterday. They were collected yesterday. And many people who have wished to sign have not even been given the opportunity or even seen that. Please do not turn this amazing clinic into a minute clinic. Please allow, please allow it. I'm begging you to allow it, to stay as it is. An amazing clinic with access to a wonderful general practitioner and our own internal medicine doctor. We acknowledge the time it has taken to come to know us personally, research and understand our individual needs, which we'll have to go out and get a new internal doctor, and that will be very expensive to the county because it's not the same as having a nurse practitioner see you when you have a sore throat. We also understand losing Dr. Mitchif will sever the longstanding institutional knowledge of our medical needs and of us as people. And that alone is irreplaceable and will affect our long-term medical care. In closing, and I'm going to make this short so the next person can come up, please be remembered to the employees as heroes who have the courage to stop this action before it is too late. So on behalf of the hundreds of employees who love this clinic and their families, we ask you to honor this sacred relationship that a person has with their primary physician. So I'm respecting, respectfully asking the three of you to be the hero and step up and to continue this, to really make this continuity of care continue by honoring our employees by voting this down today. Continuity of care is the most important thing, and we have that. We have a clinic to be proud of, one that I would herald across the whole United States and every county on how great one county government provided great medical care to their employees. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Assessor Sharp.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Kathy. Good morning, commissioners. I can't say much more than what Kathy did, although you know me, I guess I can. You said we could have as much time as we want. I spoke last night, and I think, I know that Julie heard it. I'm not going to reiterate everything. I can just say that I do represent the other employees of this county. They've asked me to speak for them, and I totally agree with how they feel. I was part of the original group that set this clinic up. It was quite a... It was quite a, it was an honor to even do this, and the commissioners took the lead on this 14 years ago. We had no idea what we were getting into. We set the, we set the standard throughout the state. We were the first ones. I appreciate, you know, I have no idea how much I appreciate Elizabeth and everything she said. It's the first time I've heard some of this. I don't disagree that there are probably issues that need to be addressed by our current provider. I think what we see as employees here that use the clinic and have used it for however many years it's been in place, we see the human side, not the other side. And I can only imagine, because I've gone through a lot of change in my office and the technology and everything, but maybe we could work out something that would work for everybody on this. I'm just asking you to please take in consideration, and I know, Jeff, that we're under a timeframe, but I have to tell you one thing, that I do read my emails. And I didn't notice that email where we sent a survey. It didn't say because we were getting rid of our healthcare people. It was just, how is it going? We get a survey, believe it or not, maybe do two. Every time you go to the clinic, the clinic sends out a survey to how was your, how was your experience? I always answer that. I don't think I really need to, because it's always perfect, but I do answer that. But I can also tell you that a lot of our county employees do not have access to email. Highway Department, they're in the truck. We don't have computers in their trucks where they can sit and answer their email. So I know that, and do my staff have time to sit and look at every email that comes in? I had 178 emails yesterday. Okay. I probably have that many again today. We try to, we try to do the best we can, but when we have these meetings, they maybe need to be a little bit more open-ended or something. I don't, that's you guys. That's not me. I just am here to plead for the, plead for the county to, let's try to keep a doctor. Hopefully, it could be Mitchif, but if we go with another one, he's got to stay with who he's with. I think it's very ironic, when we started this process years ago, we wanted the city to come with us, they wouldn't. So we went to other people. Now, the city has our clinic, and we're going to move out. And so I just think that's unfortunate that it came to this. I appreciate you guys listening and maybe thinking a little bit more about this, but thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Hello, good morning.
Thank you.
I apologize, I don't have anything written down. I was actually just at my annual appointment with Dr. Mitchif. So just for everybody, I'm Anne Christelias. I'm a planner too at the county planning department, and I've, as of April, I've been there five years. My work with the clinic, working with the clinic has been one of the best healthcare providers I've ever experienced. As most of you know, that in planning, nothing goes very quickly. We take a lot of time to work with our stakeholders, and we pay attention to public comment. And I know that when county employees are not particularly satisfied, there's, you normally hear about it, right? We're generally not a quiet group. And I can say honestly that I've never heard any issues with the clinic. And I can't recall ever being asked my opinion outside of the, you've had an appointment from Everside, and you say, how was your visit? And I say, it was great. The presentation today had a lot of justification and issues for supporting this new contract that I was not aware of, and I've never heard from any other county employees. I actually really appreciate that, I appreciate that when I call, I know that if my call wasn't answered, somebody's probably drawing blood. And I appreciate that I don't get a call center. I really appreciate that. And I appreciate that I can go see my doctor. I do not want telehealth. Virtual options have been fantastic, but I do not want my health to be a virtual option. I am, going back to the hearing stakeholders, I am surprised that I had to hear that my healthcare is being overhauled last Thursday, and it's been almost one week. I am surprised that there's not been more communication about this change. And again, I'm doubly surprised because I've never heard that we had so many issues with the clinic. And I would like to request that the commissioners hear and request for their stakeholders' opinion on this matter. Just this weekend, I was at a family party, and I heard the statement, "Your county employee, well, at least you get good benefits." And please, please note, these are our good benefits. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Judy Madeira, and I'm speaking in two capacities today, as an expert in law and medicine, and as a Democratic nominee for County Commissioner, District 3. I would love to use this clinic as it currently stands. So I would like to speak briefly, mostly about the decision to replace the current provider staff with no physician and one nurse practitioner. This is an unhealthy direction. We should continue what has been working and retain those providers that county employees and their families have come to trust. My academic qualifications allow me to speak to the difference in care between nurse practitioners and physicians across care settings. Nurse practitioners are particularly useful when there just aren't enough doctors to serve a population, particularly in rural areas. And that's just not the situation here. As we've already heard, nurse practitioners in this state have reduced practice authority. They can perform some of their scope of practice without physician supervision. Optimally, physician supervision means a physician in the same practice, not one overseeing remotely. Nurse practitioner organizations have been lobbying really hard across this country for full practice authority. So far, that has not been successful in Indiana, despite an attempt recently in 2023. Nurse practitioners by themselves are not and should not be the new standard of care. Their best is part of a physician-led team. Cutting the doctor out is cutting the head off the team. There are substantial differences in training from a nurse practitioner to a physician. Nurse practitioners have 500 to 750 hours of clinical training. Some of these hours are usually online and observational. They lack rigorous evaluation. Physicians, on the other hand, have 12,000 to 21,000 hands-on clinical training hours. This does not give nurse practitioners the training or knowledge to diagnose and treat some serious medical conditions which arise in primary care situations when patients first attempt to intervene and seek attention for health problem. Physicians, on the other hand, involve extensive clinical experiences in their training, assume responsibility, and have years of shoulder-to-shoulder, in-person oversight by clinical faculty. Our provider needs to be prepared to address every clinical situation that may arise. So what does the research show? One study by the mayor, my, sorry, not the Mannase Clinic, the Mayo Clinic, found that the quality of referrals, pre-visit care, and other factors were higher for physicians than for nurse practitioners. Other recent studies about nurse practitioner efficacy are inconclusive because they lack randomization, they lack control groups, and they're performed in settings where nurse practitioners are already under physician supervision in the same office. So then, what's the incentive in healthcare settings to replace physicians with nurse practitioners? Usually, a lot of it for for-profit healthcare companies is pretty predictable, and that's cost. Reimbursement rates for nurse practitioner care are usually substantially lower, 85% of the physician rate. So in getting rid of Monroe County's clinic, patients, our employees, us, we're going to lose. What individuals in the past have gained will be month-long waits to see a real physician, more rushed appointments, more personal care, likely increased out-of-pocket costs overall, rising co-pays, and inferior healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leanne Johnson from the sheriff's office. L-I-A-N-E for the teleprompter. Wow, everybody before me is covering this very well. Our concern was that this was a surprise to a lot of people. I understand and can appreciate that Elizabeth and maybe Angie have been working on this in the background for months, but the survey that came out, which I do recall, and it has been mentioned, seemed kind of like a generic, hey, how was your visit? How do you like your clinic? Was everything good? Nowhere was there any transparency that something was in the works, let alone that it had a deadline of August 1st. So if it had an August 1st deadline, like Attorney Cockrell said, the day that survey came out, you guys have already told our vendor, we're leaving you, we're going somewhere else. If you needed to give them a six-month heads-up, that commitment's been made already. And I have a problem with that as a county employee who loves my provider. Hi, Doc Mitchif. The man has been, like it's been said, he's intuitive, he's smart, he thinks outside the box, he cares about his patients like they're his family. He's spent more time with me and my little quirks, and he has found me answers where most people, and nurse practitioners included, might give up. I'm standing here today, literally, because of Dr. Mitchif. Okay? So I have a little issue with the fact that we may be throwing him to the wind right now with this merger, with this whatever. So I want to ask Elizabeth especially some questions about, what is the outcome for our physician and our relationship with that physician? Should he be ousted from this clinic? Will we still have free will to go see that physician? Will we still be able to use the clinic if we chose to go somewhere else? Is this decision already made? Is the ink on the paper? Have you guys made your decision to go somewhere else because of the time she's put in? I get it, but no one else was involved. Sounds to me like two people have done all this research and gotten all this data, and a lot of numbers were thrown out at us, but the us in the county wasn't consulted? We didn't know any of this was happening in the background. I think it sounds like we have a telephone issue. Maybe we need to revise our websites. It sounds like it's more technology than personnel issues if people aren't happy, and I think that can be resolved without revising everything. So if you guys have put ink on paper and made a contract, I urge you to renege on it, start over, wipe out the August 1st deadline, and let's think about this with the whole county involved, for all of us involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Peter Iverson. I am a Monroe County resident, a member of the Monroe County Council, and the president of the Personnel Administration Committee, and that's how I rise today to make my statement. One of the things that we've been seeing impact as we serve the entire county is our status as an employer in this community. Increasingly, our competitive stance in this community is being threatened. We in the council have seen over and over again, department heads coming to us, asking us to reevaluate job descriptions, asking us to reevaluate classifications for different job classifications, and even as recently as last night, we had three different requests to move different positions from 35 hours to 40 hours just to make jobs competitive. One of the jobs that we heard about was a job where they were having trouble getting applicants to a job. This is not only just about attracting quality employees here to Monroe County, but also retaining them. One of the concerns that has been vocalized so far is that if we move to this model, it will make other models much more attractive, particularly in the city of Bloomington or at other employers. It will induce employees, particularly those with families and those with children, to seek medical care that better fits their living standards and their family systems. I will also point out that as of last night, we received this packet, which I'm sure you all have as well, there were only five pages of signatures at last night's county council meeting. As of right now, I have nine pages of signatures. The chorus of people that are concerned, that have questions that we've talked about, is growing from the county council's perspective. And so I want to leave you with those two points. Number one is, we need to be reducing as many barriers to employment here in Monroe County as possible. And the second is that clearly, whether or not a timeline has existed, whether or not emails have been sent, whether or not work has been done in a public meeting, there's an increasing number of people that feel that they simply did not get the information. So I encourage and look forward to a reconsideration of what we're doing here and answer to some of these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do have our surveyor online on Teams. It appears he's the only one with a hand raised, so if we could bring him over for Surveyor Enright Randolph, if you could limit your comment to three minutes, we'd appreciate it, but you don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you for the exception. I won't go over three minutes. I'll be very brief. A lot of people have said more about this than I'm going to, because, well, first, let me introduce myself. I'm Tron Enright Randolph, Monroe County Surveyor. I've been with the county for over 19 years now. I remember when Activate and now the new name. I don't use our benefits as much as some of the county employees, but what I wanted to share today is this was the first time I've heard about this. I've wanted to just provide more, or would like more information provided. I guess there was a survey that went around. I've been on vacation, but again, hearing about this and knowing that you were going to potentially take action made me want to provide the comment that we should really provide more information to county employees. I would like more information. I'll need to re-watch Elizabeth's presentation again, just to kind of understand it. I always like to hear it twice. I also want to watch the council meeting that occurred. It just kind of caught me off guard, and I wanted to express that I'm very involved with a lot of different things, and I stay on top of a lot of different discussions. And for this to be the first time I heard about it brings pause. Not that I want to question if it's the right choice or the wrong choice, but I really think more time is needed to discuss this. And as you know, I try not to get into too much of other kind of decisions that come to your dais, so this is one that I think is going to impact a lot of employees. So thanks for listening to me today.
Thank you. Does anyone else have, please?
I'd like to, if like, before the E says anything, just for the group, I would just like for everybody to understand that I know that E and Seth, and I try to stay out of it as much as possible, but they bent over backwards trying to keep the current provider. And that was because we know how much the staff is appreciated by our employees. However, there is much more than just the staff being an issue at hand, but I do want you to understand that these two people did everything, I think even remotely possible, to try and get a different outcome for this particular RFP, and it just wasn't possible.
Yeah, thank you. E, once you start speaking, it should come on.
There you go. Fancy.
It's magical.
It's technology. Yeah. So I wanted to, if possible, give Sarah from Apex a chance to speak to some of the things that were brought up.
Great. Sarah Michaels, there you are.
Hello, guys. My name is Sarah Michaels, and it has been an honor to get to help Monroe County through this process. As Angie just said, I can't even express how much time and dedication both Elizabeth and Seth have devoted to this over the past three months. We talk, if not daily, weekly, as we've been evaluating all options. And the first thing I really want to say, and this is coming from a very unbiased viewpoint, right? I'm just here to help consult and to present all options to you guys. I very much appreciate everybody's commentary, and in fact, what we try to achieve when we put clinics in place is a benefit to the employees, right? And the fact that you guys see this as a benefit and you so strongly believe in what we're doing, that's why we do what we do, that's why you see the investment that's being made by the county, and I want to start by acknowledging that. I also want to say that the theme that I heard and what I know the commissioners just heard was that we're very passionate about the provider, and we love Dr. Mitchif, and I don't want to take away from that at all. I know I read your surveys, I saw there was a lot of people that would agree with that statement, but actually- But actually, today, we are not even here to discuss changing providers. What we're here to discuss is changing vendor management. And I just want to clarify, because there seems to be a little bit of confusion there. The issues we have been having have not revolved around your providers. You guys love Wendy. You guys love Heather. You love Dr. Mitchif. Those are your providers. The issues and the broader contract at large here today that we're discussing is the vendor. So if we reframed that, what we're discussing is Everside was acquired recently by Marathon. And when that acquisition took place, we really had to decide what is going to be the cost impact. And what you guys saw earlier in Elizabeth's great presentation, there was going to be a $1.2 million change to current services simply because of this acquisition that took place. And that was the fuel to really start the conversation. I would say last summer, when we started having these issues, we were going to go live then with reevaluating the clinic vendor, not providers, but the vendor. We did not, because what we wanted to do was give Everside a fair chance to rectify the issues at hand. That is all happening behind the scenes. Your team has been handling that, but unfortunately, it got to a spot where they responded back to us, there were just capabilities they could not do. The biggest one being on the data side. Again, does not impact the providers at all. So when we did this RFP, we gave them six months to rectify before we even went to an RFP, when they acknowledged they couldn't, and then it became a capacity issue with this new acquisition taking place. We had to do what was best for the county. We had to evaluate all options. As a consultant, I always say every five years is probably appropriate to look at this, just to make sure you're getting the best price and the best value. As E said, there are certain services we were not receiving today that through this process, we're now able to bring to our employees. So I want to start by saying that. I also want to chime in based off the commentary I heard to say, Dr. Mitchif, Heather, and Wendy, all are able to be offered jobs by Proactive MD. Today's contract and why the communication has not gone out to staff yet is we cannot communicate anything until a contract is signed. You guys probably understand, like legally, that's what we have to do before we can communicate broadly. We don't want to cause confusion. We don't want there to be any change to patient care, and so we want to make sure we have legal contracts in place and we can start those conversations. Once those contracts are in place, then it becomes a vendor-to-vendor decision on if Marathon, who's now Everside's, who took on that acquisition, if Marathon is willing to release an employee agreement and allow those doctors to choose to stay on board. So step one has to be signing this actual contract for vendor management. And as Elizabeth laid out, we feel most strongly in making the recommendation for Proactive based off a three-month thorough review on the services they can offer. Step two then becomes staffing. And even just through your commentary, when I was texting with some of the Proactive team to give them updates about, here are our concerns, they had even stated, you know, should the doctor wish to stay on board? That is a pricing that we could always talk about. I will say Marathon, if we were to stay with Incumbent, so if we were not sign that contract today and stay with Incumbent, Marathon as a vendor was also getting rid of the doctor. Marathon's proposed model was simply to leave one nurse practitioner in place. And I, again, I don't want to minimize anything that was said today, because I love that you guys feel so passionately for this provider, that's why we provide care. But the Marathon team was also getting rid of that provider, and that's probably what's most important to hear based off all the evaluations we had done. The only thing they were willing to discuss was adding him 10 hours per month. So that is roughly just one day per month in opening that access up to staff, and it was at a pretty high cost point. And so regardless of the contract we were to choose, we were unfortunately losing him based off of, we weren't keeping that current model. Like that was not even a discussion we had to make. However, I would say it could be a discussion based off the county's decision, and should you guys wish to see priced out what it would be to retain the doctor, we could always price that option out versus an MD model, we could go to a full doctor model. But that would be up to Marathon and the doctor, should they wish to stay. So I just wanted to start with that commentary, and I obviously will stay online should you guys have questions, but I wanted you to hear from me as the consultant that these unfortunately were the options presented. It was a vendor management, not a provider decision at this point in time, and I hope that helps clarify some questions.
Yeah, it really does. Ms. Michaels, thank you for that information. I think that offers a great deal of clarity. E, did you want to add anything else?
I don't know if I should say this, but I will. One of the concerns that has been brought up is about employees leaving to go and to be with the city so that they can have access to their provider. Now, I don't know what the contract for the city looks like, but their primary care physician at the facility that they're using on Second Street is a nurse practitioner, is not Dr. Mitchif. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Helpful. It's helpful. Thank you. Let's come back and see Commissioner Jones, did you have any other questions or comments?
I certainly understand the kind of relationship that people often develop with their doctor, which is very important and really a very personal relationship. I actually never took advantage of the clinic because I had the same doctor from when I was eight years old until about 10 years ago, and was very, very attached to him, saw no reason to go any other way. Well, he retired, and since he retired, I've had six different doctors. They've retired, they've moved, they've moved to a different part of medicine. So while I understand how important your doctor is to you, just because we keep the old model doesn't necessarily mean that that doctor will always be available to you. And I also want to comment on the possibility of a patient's advocate, which recently my husband had reason to be cared for by a patient advocate, and it was truly an amazing experience. He had a plethora of appointments to keep track of, various different activities he had to keep on top of. It was very, very demanding, and this patient advocate actually called almost on a daily basis to make sure that his care was continuing in the way that it was supposed to. Now, since he's recovered, that's backed off a whole lot, but that patient advocate is still keeping track of him. So I would like to highly recommend that if we do decide to change plans, that we do go with the patient advocate, which I think is a kind of medical security that is very valuable. Thank you.
That's good feedback, and I just want to say that Proactive was the only company that offered that.
Commissioner Gins.
So even if we stayed with Marathon, we have no guarantee that they would keep, because of the, it's changed in what they're doing, that they would keep Dr. Mitchif, that they would keep Wendy Beeter, that, I mean, we have no guarantee of that.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, there, I think there, we had a lot of questions.
Yeah, they're not our direct employees, so we have no control over that. That could change tomorrow if they wanted to. I guess I also want to ask our own employees, you know, last year, we fought for a substantial raise. If I, I was looking at numbers last night on current cost of living increase, it's about 3.4%, I think is what I read. So if the council sticks with that, people won't be getting huge raises this year. And when I look at these numbers, having an MD on that model could end up costing about $2,000 extra per employee, which is not insubstantial, and I would question where we're to get that money from if the council will actually make that available without it grossly impacting people's bottom line, our employees' bottom line.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because that is factored into our health insurance costs that are passed on to the employees, so there is some consideration for that. I think it's, I don't know, it's really difficult, because we have some people that say, I'm willing to pay that, but then maybe there are other people who aren't here today who just don't, yeah, they don't want to, they don't, they wouldn't want to pay that. So there's just a lot of, I don't, this is a very difficult consideration, because there are a lot of things to, a lot of moving parts, for sure.
But I based that 2,000 on that differential of one and a half million that we saw in the numbers you presented. But also, if I'm understanding this correctly, and please tell me if I've got it wrong, this doesn't lock us, what we're looking at today, doesn't lock us into Proactive MD. What it does is give us a better sense of what they could and would do and at what price. Is that correct?
In regards, Jeff, in regard to the implementation agreement?
Well, the implementation agreement says we will in good faith negotiate a contract. And if we can't come to a, if there, if at the end of the day, we can't come to an arrangement, this agreement says how the, it says 42 in there and plus a percentage of something. I assume all that adds up to 59,000 that's on the agenda cover sheet. This says that we'll say, well, here's how, here's how we earn our part of that 59, depending on if negotiations break down, and it doesn't. But it does have the good faith, we will negotiate in good faith to get there. So I don't want to take that lightly, that this is a step that way. But at the end of the day, if the negotiations break down, this agreement does say, here's, it contemplates that, and this is how that fee would be distributed.
I guess too, I have heard things today about what people's preferences are, and I would assume that in the final contract, some of those preferences could be taken into account. So.
But we can't actually have those conversations department by department to find out, do we really, do we, you know? Yeah. And that would be my comment. I think, and again, thank you everyone who has, you know, emailed and called and presented today as well. I appreciate that a lot. And I think it's a real testament to the good work of providers, which, as Ms. Michaels mentioned, are not the issue, it's the administration, it's the vendor. And that was the best thing, the clarity of that statement was the best thing to be presented in that context about providers. I would, I would say that, you know, in those conversations, I think it'll be important, because, you know, we heard last night, Councilmember Hawke said, oh, we'll pay for whatever we need to pay for to keep our providers, our medical providers. Okay, great, so let's talk about, when you have those department meetings, if you could get a sense of what we need in terms of a physician, then let's talk about adding a physician on. I mean, you know, primary care doctors and folks are attached to a particular person, but they do move. They move from network to network, they retire, they move out of state. We cannot hold somebody hostage and make them work for us forever. And so I think part of this is, yes, change is difficult. It may be possible to continue with our current providers, nurse practitioner and physician. Great, okay, but that's not a negotiation we are going to have, and this is not something, again, that happens in the public eye, because it's a personnel issue, and in fact, it's between a vendor administrator and the providers they hire. But we can say to them, we want a physician two days a week, and they will oblige for X amount of dollars. So I would just encourage that to consider that model where we do have a nurse practitioner and we do have a physician, you know, a couple days of whatever we have now, which is, I think, two days a week, right? Or one and a half, is it one and a half?
For the physician?
Yeah.
It's actually, I mean, it's relatively three days. It's not three full days, but it's in the office three days.
So we get two full days, then we'd be approximating what we're doing, figure out the cost, and if folks are upset with the cost of their health insurance, we will hear about it, I'm sure, and we can change the model. But that's what Proactive does, is they let us change that model.
Absolutely.
And that's the plan, is to have an ongoing, with real data, have an ongoing conversation about what's working, what's not, what do you need more of, what do you need less of, and really to respond to that in a way we've never had before, which is great. But I, it is a testament to the provision of care of Dr. Mitchif and Wendy and folks at the clinic. Thank you, I mean, they are great. It may be that they're still there, and, but that is, again, not our, and staying with our current vendor does not guarantee that they will still be there anyway. And that's the important thing. We have to find an administrative vendor that will work with us and our employees, and this is a very flexible, thoughtful vendor, and you all went through a lot of work to find them. But the provider of healthcare may or may not change, and I know change is difficult for people, but it certainly could mean that we have a physician a couple days a week. And, you know, but let's see, let's see what those conversations are, but in order to see what those conversations are department by department, we need to have a contract.
Correct. And I will say, you brought up a few really good points. The data issue is really troublesome for us, because we can't make decisions, because the information that we're receiving is not accurate. So us being able to make scheduling of provider decisions, we haven't, it's been difficult to get an accurate picture of what that looks like. And so that is why we were interested in the nurse practitioner model, because we could sort of scale back, figure out what our needs are, so that we could build on that from there. And we're, you know, we're hearing a lot of feedback too, so we can have those conversations. Ultimately, the administration of the clinic was the major concern for us, not the care that's being provided, and we know that those affect one another. But we, I just want to be clear that we were thinking about the future and how to give the best possible outcomes for the future. And so that's where we were coming from in our evaluation of everything.
I appreciate that. I, you know, and I, and I understand, we're hearing concerns about, you know, well, I didn't know anything about this, and, you know, things have been on the calendar, things have been on our agenda. I, you know, I am not sure, yeah, I, we'll have a conversation about what else we could have potentially done outside of hiring carrier pigeons to land on everyone's desk. You know, you don't know what's important to people, but clearly, we knew this was important all along, we knew this was important. It has been something we have talked about a lot, a lot. So, and the work you did, again, you and Seth, thank you, appreciate it. Did you have anything else from today? Anything else?
I've been taking notes, though, clearly.
My notebook, yes. Yep.
I'm remembering.
Good for you. All right. All right. So thanks to everyone, really. I think, you know, things change, times change, health models change. If we're, we are hearing, we want a physician, we don't, we want to have that, then we can respond to that. And so, you know, we're continuing to be responsive, and we will continue to be responsive. So, yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Are we ready to call the questions? All right, are we ready to call the question?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll take a quick break. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on the Business Associates Agreement and Project Implementation Commitment with Proactive M.D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you so much, appreciate you. All right. Let's take a quick recess. Can we come back at 10 past noon? Okay, great. We are going to be in recess for 10 minutes. Thank you all. All right, we are going to come back from recess, reconvene our meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, and we will move on to Item D, please.
Move approval of Matrix Integration for Health Building Access Gate Rewire. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $1,111.50.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Krone, so we're voiding the previous May 15 agreement?
That is correct.
Okay.
That quote was sent to us, it was largely short of the scope of, full scope of work, so it was way under quoted. Matrix caught their error and then reached out to me. So yes, this will avoid the agreement signed on the 15th, and this will supersede that.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, it'd be good to have it taken care of. Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Matrix Integration for, Contract for Health Building Access Gate Rewire, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Soft Choice Adobe Pro Renewal Contract. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $21,870.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Would you tell us all about this one, please?
Yes. Here at the county, we use Adobe Pro, obviously, for creating PDF documents, as well as editing those documents. We also use those for redaction purposes, so we can go through and redact for FOIA requests. We also use that utilities embedded in Adobe Pro to scan all of our documents that we put on our website for ADA compliance. That's all embedded within that. Previous years, we've ran 350 licenses. Those, that number of license predates me by the old director. Not sure why we went with that amount, but right now, we're only utilizing about 87 licenses. So I've reduced that. One, we needed to reduce it anyway, but we also found out, when this renewal came up, that Adobe has opted on all government contracts to raise 40% across the board. We were not aware of this, so we could not budget. When we were figuring 10%, which is about standard for all software, Adobe decided to take a bear cut. So we're trying to cut that down, but still leave enough room, licensing room for growth in case we take on new employees or job scopes change and they need that licensing, so.
Makes sense, but it's still, the 125 is still over the number that we use today?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And we can always go back if we need more licenses and add more?
We can, it's not instantaneous, it is a bit of a process. One thing that bothers me, this is kind of like, this is only second to cybersecurity on things that keep me up at night and keep me eating Tums like Pez out of the dispenser. These prices, what we're seeing across the board is, everybody's going to subscription-based models, and especially for government, education, non-for-profits, they're starting to gouge hard on this. And we're getting ready to hit another situation with our virtual servers. The software we use for that, VMware, who's the company, the gold standard across the board, was recently bought out by Broadcom. Broadcom has gone through and said, "We're raising everybody's prices, going after government," but they still can't tell us what that pricing model looks like. So really, there's only a few options you have to work in a virtual environment, and corporations now are immediately having to go look at other solutions, because Broadcom has created quite the situation. But this isn't isolated to these two softwares. I expect to see a lot more of this coming, and that's why we have to be so cognizant on watching our licensing and making sure that we're utilizing everything we can, and we don't have much in excess, because our budget is just, it's going up faster than we can accommodate for it.
Yeah, makes sense. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just an unfortunate situation with the raises.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I appreciate having the software with, because we get these packets every single week, and sometimes I do, I'm going back and forth from page to page, and being able to, to search within is really valuable. So I appreciate the fact that you're able to do this for at least some of us. Yeah.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Soft Choice Adobe Pro Renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Addendum to the Warehouse MOU. Fund names, JDAI Programming and JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund numbers, 9145 and 9146, in a total amount of $14,500, with that split evenly between the two fund numbers.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. McAfee. Thank you for your patience.
Hello, good afternoon.
Ooh.
Yeah, this is our, our JDAI grant. We are coming to the end of our grant cycle, which is June 30th, and as you all remember, we have partnered with the warehouse for the last few years to pay for supervision for those young people in the community that are too young for liability standards to come without adult supervision, but really want to hang out at one of the coolest places in Monroe County, which is the warehouse. This year, we were able to fund them with just over $14,000. Staffing did not cost that much, and so we are asking for the MOU to be amended, so that we can repurpose the leftover dollars and buy recreational and supply items. Dave Wild, the executive director, is pretty confident that the basketballs they buy have legs, because they seem to walk off pretty regularly. There are also things like ping pong paddles and ping pong balls and weight equipment, all kinds of really neat stuff. And honestly, there's just so much use of it, that the wear and tear, they need to make sure that they have an inventory to resupply what is, what is used up. So this is, this is not any new dollars, it's just repurposing dollars that were already provided.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Just a comment, this is a wonderful facility to have in our community, and I really appreciate the fact that you're making use of them.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree, and it's also nice that you'll be able to repurpose this money in this way. That kind of equipment does help a lot.
Yeah, it does, for sure. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Addendum to the Warehouse MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Item G, please.
Move approval of the Addendum to the Family Solutions MOU. Fund name, JDAI Performance Grant. Fund number, 9146, in an amount not to exceed $10,335.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. McAfee.
Yes, so again, with our grant dollars, we had some dollars that were awarded, and we're going to partner with a community agency, provide some training by the end of the month. Schedules got a little more complicated, and they are not able to use the funding. So this is in an effort to use funds that were awarded to us. You might remember, Family Solutions is offering a 10-week parent project training for parents of strong-willed kids. They started the program back in April. We had originally anticipated that it would require two facilitators. They had three facilitators trained, and since this was the inaugural session, they opted to use all three facilitators, and so that's incurred a little bit more cost to Family Solutions. And because we had this grant opportunity available, we are asking permission to use those dollars to pay them for the services rendered.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This certainly seems worthwhile.
Commissioner Githens?
I think anything that keeps a juvenile out of the criminal justice system is worthwhile.
Absolutely. No, this is great, great program, really great program. Okay, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Addendum to Family Solutions MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Addendum for People and Animals Learning Services, or PALS, MOU. Fund name, JDAI Performance Grant. Fund number, 9146, in an amount, not, in a grant amount not to exceed $4,000. And I would like to point out that also, that this extends the program, I mean, through June 30th of 2024, not June 30th, 2004, so. Yeah. Sorry, I was so late emailing you about that, Ms. McAfee.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, Ms. McAfee.
Yes, thank you, first of all, for that correction. Yeah, 2004, holy cow, that was a while ago. As you all remember, I'm sure, we are having our first session partnership with PALS, which is People and Animal Learning Services, over on the far, far west side of town. The response from the community has been absolutely amazing. We will wrap up our first 12 sessions, the first part of June. But again, because we had some unexpected grant funds available, PALS was fantastic to work with, and we are extending the initial session with the core families by eight additional sessions, so it will go through the end of June. We've also asked in this amendment to, for the ability of PALS to purchase some safety wear, predominantly closed-toed shoes, which are required for young, for the young people and families when they participate with the, this service, as well as have on stock, maybe, you know, some hats, gloves, windbreakers. They've got a beautiful facility, and when weather permits, not only do big people and little people like to be outside, but apparently, the horses really like to be outside, too. So we want to accommodate for all kinds of weather conditions.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
It's amazing how these animals can just bring a calmness to people and also help to build their self-confidence.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I, I think it's known that I've always been very supportive of this particular project, and yes, a lot of it is because working with animals often seems to bring out the best in people.
Great program, it's nice to see it expand a bit. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Addendum for People and Animals Learning Services, PALS, MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. McAfee, thanks for your patience.
Thank you all so very much, have a great day.
You, too. Next item, please.
Move approval of Milestone Contractors Agreement for Community Crossing Matching Grant Paving Projects. Fund names, Motor Vehicle Highway and County General. Fund numbers, 1176 and 1,000, in an amount of $2,769,356.50.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge, is the queen of patience today. Would you tell us all about that?
Good morning. So we did award this back in April, so to, for NDOT to release the funds for this, these paving projects, we need to have the contract in place, so we can get it to them as soon as possible, and that's what we are bringing to you today.
Thank you so much. Could you go through that list of roadways again?
I can do that.
I think it's helpful for people to know.
Yeah. So on this round of community crossings, we did, submitted Mount Pleasant Road, Monroe Dam Road, Valley Mission Road, Rockport Road, which is the portion from city limits to Fullerton Pike, Sewell Road, Bremetts Creek Road from State Road 45 to Baby Creek, Ramp Creek Road, Popcorn Road, Chambers Pike, Vernal Pike from State Road 48 to Ord Road, Oak Ridge Drive, and then Shelburne Estates, which is Andover Court, Chatham Drive, Liverpool Lane, Shelburne Drive, Brewster Court, Bristol Drive, Foxway Drive, Manchester Court, Trenton Overlook, Winterberry Drive, Yorkshire Court, and then Zikes Road and Woodland Road. These projects have began. The match for this program comes from the County General Fund that the council appropriated, so we were able to start using our in-house funds before we received the community crossing match to get the project started.
Awesome, great, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just very pleased to see so many roads being improved.
Commissioner Githens?
I'm going to thank Ms. Ridge for going after every single dollar available through the Community Crossing Matching Grant. It's, it's meant a lot to people who, county residents.
Yeah, it does, it means a lot, and, and just getting so much paving work done is just incredible, and to be recipient of this award so many years consecutively is a testament to the great work of Ms. Ridge and Mr. Turner and everybody at our department, so thank you all. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Milestone Contractors Agreement for Community Crossing Matching Grant Paving Projects, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item.
Move approval of award for Milestone Contractors LP for the Morse Creek Stormwater Project. Fund name, Stormwater. Fund number, 1197, in an amount of $592,550.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge?
Yes, so we opened bids publicly on May 23rd. We had four bids submitted for the Morse Creek Road Stormwater Project. The project consists of raising a portion of Morse Creek to try and eliminate, eliminate some of the over-the-road flooding that has been occurring for many years. It's our goal to have the project, this section of the project done this year, and then the next contract down the way you'll have for the remainder of the road to be paved. So yeah, we're thrilled that this is one of our projects that's been in the works for many years in our Stormwater Division.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
The three of us all sit on the Stormwater Board, and I, I've seen this for over five years now, and I keep wondering when's something going to happen, so it's finally, it's great to finally see something happen.
Commissioner Jones?
I completely agree. It is nice to see this moving ahead at this time.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding Milestone Contractors LP, the Morse Creek Stormwater Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the award, salt bids to Morton Salt, Inc. and Cargill, Inc. Fund name, Local Road and Street. Fund number, 1169, in an amount on a per-ton pricing as needed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge?
So we're going a different direction this year with our salt. In the past, NDOT puts out, we usually piggyback off of their program, then you are committed to whatever you submit on the tonnage, whether it be 2,000 or 3,000 ton, you're committed to purchasing that amount. And then if you have a mild winter, then we're not using that amount of salt. So we went ahead and did bids on our own. We opened those sealed bids on May 15th. We would like to award it to Morton Salt and Cargill due to the availability of product. We are accepting two different types of product, the non-treated salt and treated salt. And again, it will be as per-ton and as, as on a needed basis.
All right, thank you so much. Comments? Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Untreated and treated salt? What is the difference? Am I putting you on the spot? I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. So there's an additive put into the treated salt that allows the material to activate at lower temperature. So when you see the green within the city on the streets in the winter, that is treated salt. So we have non-treated salt that we mix with our sand, and that's what we do around the county. Sand can be a real issue. We've tried to minimize the sand usage. We would like to go to more salt. It's very expensive, especially the treated salt. But, you know, we want to look at, you know, we kind of joke that we have this circle of, you know, we buy the sand, we put the sand out on the road, then we sweep up the sand, and then we haul the sand to a landfill. So it's a vicious circle, but again, the treated salt is very expensive, but we would like to try and maybe with our new brine system, you can use the treated and untreated through the brine system. And of course, we want to expand our brine system, more trucks with the tanks, to help us get out of so much sand. So makes sense. All right. Yeah. Commissioner Githens?
So I had messaged with Ms. Ridge earlier today, so you gave a very nice explanation of what happens with that treated salt. So would you ever purchase it? I mean, like, I didn't stop and look at how effective it is down to what temperature and things like that. I know that regular salt is only effective down to, what, about minus 20 or something like that at most?
Yeah.
I don't even think it's that.
Yeah, I don't think it's that either. I think the treated salt might get you down to more to that level, but the untreated does not.
It's not effective in Arctic circles.
All right. Thank you for all the information, the explanation, and it makes sense to do it this way, so I appreciate the flexibility. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding the salt bids to Morton Salt, Inc. and Cargill, Inc. signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Item L, please.
Move approval to award EMB Paving LLC various paving projects. Fund name: Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund number: 1176. In an amount of $1,117,850.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So we put out another list of paving projects. We publicly opened those bids on May 22 for various roads. Two bids were opened, one from Milestone and one from EMB Paving. EMB Paving was the low bid on this list of roads. And the following roads that were submitted in this project list are Hacker's Creek Road, Hacker's Creek Place, Lost Man's Lane, Brighton Road, Bottom Road, Mel Curry Road, Gifford Road, Endright Road, and Airport Road.
Awesome. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Even more paving. It's always good to see. Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding EMB Paving various paving projects signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next item.
Before I move on, regular salt brine freezes at minus 6 degrees Fahrenheit. Okay. Move to approval.
Awarding EMB Paving LLC Morse Creek Road Paving Project. Fund name: Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund number: 1176. In an amount of $294,492.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So again, we opened sealed bids on May 23, 2024 by Highway Department personnel. Two bids were received, Milestone and EMB. This will be paving Morse Creek Road from Snotty Road to the beginning of the Stormwater Project. So it's, we wanted to tie those projects together, and EMB Paving was the low bid on that project. We want, actually, I'd really like to thank the people on Morse Creek Road for being patient with us on putting off this paving. We know the condition of the road. We've tried to keep it up through pothole patching, but we knew it needed paved, but we also knew that this project was in the works. We didn't want the heavy trucks traveling over a new paved road, so we wanted to tie this in together. So that's our goal, to have the project completed and then come right in afterwards and pave the rest, the remainder of the road.
Great. Great idea. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Just good idea.
All right. And it's interesting that two companies are working together, so that's good. It's good to see. Excellent. All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding EMB Paving LLC Morse Creek Road Paving Project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Okay. That was a long meeting, but a good one. We don't have any appointments today. Just a couple of announcements and just a reminder to folks that we do have virtual office hours, six hours each month. Just go to co.munro.in.us and click on the calendar, and you will see the six different time slots. Just join us via Teams anytime for a conversation. Always enlightening. We still have some money left for rural housing repair and for those things that go beyond our current American Rescue Plan Act budget. We will hold on to the information and perhaps potentially get some more funding, but this is for owner-occupied homes outside the city of Bloomington. If you have repairs that you need, but you're lower moderate income and cannot afford them, please contact your township trustee. If you live in peri township outside the city, please contact the commissioner's office directly instead. We do have a resident alert system in place to provide real-time weather warnings and updates on important emergencies in the county. Just go to co.munro.in.us and click on the megaphone to sign up. A reminder that we do cosponsor blood drives. The next one is June 12 from 1 to 6, and then June 14 from 10 to 3. These are held at IV Tech. Thank you, IV Tech. And please go to regcross.org to make an appointment if possible. We are always in need of blood products in our community. As always, we welcome applicants for board and commission appointments. We do have a vacancy on the redevelopment commission, and we are going to have a vacancy on the planning commission for a Republican position beginning in January. So I'd ask folks to consider applying. Go to co.munro.in.us, go to boards and commissions. You can learn more about these boards and commissions, and you can also apply as well. And again, thank you and congratulations to Jerry Appleberry for 32 years of service to Monroe County. Probably felt like 30 of those were putting up that darn Christmas tree, but we appreciate him a ton. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. With that, we do have a lengthy work session agenda, so we'd like to come back at 10 minutes to 1 at 12:50, 5:00, 12, 12:50, to have that meeting, if you're all amenable to that. 12:50, okay? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is June 5. Thank you all.